Okay. Welcome everyone, sorry for the delay. And I believe we're up and running. Can everybody see and hear me? Alright. As well as see the book on your screen? Okay, great. Alright, thank you. Today we'll be reading chapters five and six. The Ancient Language of the Soul: Mystic Knowledge of Mantra by Nehemiah Davis. Once again, the text is available on Amazon, both in Kindle format and in a physical text. In this chap- in these chapters, there are a couple of tables. And so I will be switching back and forth with the PDF version. Just because it's easier to see the text in the tables in that version. But you can still read them in the Kindle version. It just won't come out properly or be easy to see if you're viewing it on YouTube. So when we get to those tables, I'll move over to the PDF version. And then back to the Kindle. I think that really won't come in until chapter six. Alright, as per usual, I've read ahead and made some highlights and took some notes on or another reading. But feel free to make your own highlights and notes. Then we can ask those questions and pose more comments on Sunday during our open discussion. But let us start with today's study session. Chapter five. Transforming Gross Prana into Subtle Prana: The Science Behind Chanting Mantra. In the last chapter, we briefly touched on the power of mantra. In this chapter, I would like to go a little deeper in describing this sacred power of mantra. Mainly from the perspective of reciting mantra in a repetitious manner with passion and great devotion. This chapter will show how chanting mantra will increase the cosmic energies within the body and bring about a focused mind that will serve to elevate the mind to a higher state of consciousness. In this chapter, I will also describe how chanting the mantra stimulates the five gross senses to the point where it begins to take notice of the higher astral and etheric senses. The main goal of chanting mantra is to transform all the gross energies that it takes to chant the mantra into subtle energies. Every movement and non-movement, every sound and non-sound, every inhale and exhale of breath, every thought and every mental visualization should be focused on chanting the mantra. The energy generated from these concentrated actions with the purpose of chanting a sacred mantra is transforming subtle cosmic energies through particle acceleration of the aura. The constant chanting of the mantra brings about a sensitization of the human structure to a level where you begin to recognize and control the higher mind and chronic frequency that enters and exits the chakras. The transformation of this gross energy can be seen in the application of chanting mantra. Anywhere there's movement, you have a form of energy at work. Sound is a form of energy that has many facets to it. Oh, my apologies. You did not see what I was reading. Sorry about that. Go back to the start of this paragraph. The main goal of chanting mantra is to transformation is to transform all the gross energies that it takes to chant the mantra into subtle energies. Every movement and non-movement, every sound and non-sound, every inhale and exhale of breath, every thought and every mental visualization should be focused on chanting the mantra. The energy generated from these concentrated actions with the purpose of chanting a sacred mantra is transforming subtle cosmic energies through particle acceleration of the aura. The constant chanting of the mantra brings about a sensitization of the human structure to a level where you begin to recognize and control the higher mind and chronic frequency that enters and exits the chakras. The transformation of this gross energy can be seen in the application of chanting mantra. Anywhere there's movement, you have a form of energy at work. Sound is a form of energy that has many facets to it. The science of mantra knowledge unlocks the power of these many facets of sound. Chanting mantra is more than voicing a set of words. Mantra literally speaks to the soul of man because mantra is the language of the soul. The chakra system is described as a series of sound vibrations that expresses itself as a vortex center of consciousness that regulates cosmic energies. This ancient science describes the sound signatures that the soul uses to manifest the etheric structures, i.e. the etheric bodies, mental bodies, the subtle and astral bodies. These sound signatures are various aspects that make up the chakra system such as the following. One, the nada forces that stream forward from the bindu as a point of consciousness of the soul. This nada power is a pure, subtle, concentrated sound vibration released from the manifested point of consciousness from the soul that holds the signature sounds of the soul. The nada force comes from the soul through the bindu, expressing the chakra bija sound, which is the main seed mantra of the chakra or the original sound produced through the chakra. Number two, this main seed mantra bija is a one-syllable mantra within the chakra. It is believed that this sound vibration radiates from the chakra point of consciousness, the bindu, a spiritual germ from the spirit via the soul. Each chakra has this one-syllable seed mantra that radiates the sound signature of that seed mantra. The sound signature of the seed mantra of each chakra gives life to the chakra petals. Number three. The chakra petals are the letters that make up the Sanskrit alphabet and is also considered to be lettered seed mantras. These chakra petals surround the chakra seed mantra showing the inner power of the chakra main seed mantra bija that expresses its will to engross the subtle cosmic energies. The major chakras along the spinal column express the Sanskrit alphabet, which is made up of fifty Sanskrit letters. Each chakra expresses a number of Sanskrit letters called petals. The base chakra has four petals. The sex chakra has six petals. The navel chakra has ten petals. The heart chakra has twelve petals. The throat chakra has sixteen petals. And the chakra has two petals. Each one of these Sanskrit letters or chakra petals has a particular sound, power, and meaning behind the lettered sound. The sound power of these petals or lettered signatures gives movement to the nodis that extends from it. Number four. These lettered sound signatures extend themselves out as nodis, which are the tiny tube-like lines of force that transport all three types of nodic cosmic energies. The word "nadi" comes from the Sanskrit word "nad," which means "to move." The three types of nodis represents a positive charged flow or movement of cosmic energies, which is called the pingala nodis. A negative charge flow or movement of cosmic energies, which is called the ida nodis. And a neutral charge flow or movement of cosmic energies, which is called the shishumna nadi. The shishumna nadi is where both positive and negative cosmic energies travel together in one direction, which is the inner core of the spinal column. The shishumna nadi manifests various levels of consciousness that the soul uses to regulate cosmic energies on all planes of existence. Number five, the tathic rays within the chakras are the tempered molds of motion of the sonic vibrations that have been conditioned by the perpetual motion of the cosmic energies of the earth, sun, and moon. These molds of motion are the karmic pressures or karmic configurations of the nada forces being released by the sun and conditioned by the earth and moon. The tathic rays are the molds of motion or the configuration of motion that is created from the sun, releasing the great word every thirty-two minutes. These tathic rays are the nada forces of the sun, which is the mahabindu or the great point of consciousness for the solar system. The tathic rays give karmic description to the motion of that nada force being radiated by and from the sun. As these tathic rays come into contact with the earth and moon, they are tempered by their mahabindu presence, unleashing the karmic power signatures within them, creating several realms of existence that the soul can engross itself down to and evolve itself back to. All of the above aspects of the chakra mentioned are the sound signatures of the soul. From the above brief outline, it is clear here to see that the soul uses the chakras to manifest a series of sound vibrations according to the ancient tantric description of the chakra system. Now, we have known from studying this ancient tantric chakra system that it's also referred to as vortex centers of cosmic energies. A closer look at the components that make up the chakras will show that each chakra is represented with a one-syllable sound vibration of the ancient Sanskrit language, a seed mantra, and lettered sound vibrations from the Sanskrit language. Essentially, these sound vibrations come from the bindu, which is that force or powers that set in motion the flow of cosmic energies or pranas. The sound vibration is a way of consciousness that extends itself from the soul as the conscious will of the spirit. Now, the bindu source within the chakra that we spoke of is considered to be a point of consciousness from the divine. It is like a spiritual drop from the divine source of God. It is from this point that the soul speaks the word that set in motion from this most sacred spot, the cosmic energies that shaped man's temple of God. And it is these words from the soul that keep the cosmic energies in constant motion. This divine source of constant flow of prana makes it the vortex center of various levels of cosmic energies, pranas. Now that we have outlined the tremendous source of power latent within each chakra, we are ready to explore how to tap into this power. The best way to activate these chakra powers is through chanting or reciting mantra properly repeatedly. The following section of this chapter examines the five components of chanting mantra. It briefly describes the purpose and benefits for each one of these components used in the practice of mantra chanting, japa. Mantra's five components applied in moving prana. When engaged in mantra chanting, we have five components that are applied in moving the prana, shakti power, from the gross levels to the subtle levels. The five components applied when reciting mantra are sound, posture, breath, movement, and consciousness. The following is a brief explanation of these five components. Number one, sound. The gross aspect of sattva power that originated from the conscious will of the soul. Number two, posture. The power of the postures are called mudra yoga, a method of sealing and redirecting the chronic flow within the body. Number three, breathing. The primary intake of gross prana and the sustaining force for maintaining consciousness. And before, movement. A restriction of movement is the method of creating karmic pressures on all movement to intensify the inner levels of chronic flow. Number five, consciousness. A concentrated point of subtle energies that's been transformed from gross energies and vice versa. When mantra is recited using these five components, the practice of mantra becomes mantra yoga. Yoga means union with God. The phrase mantra yoga implies union with God through the practice of mantra. The application of reciting the mantra with the gross vocal cords is taking gross physical energies and transforming it to subtle energies. Sound is energy. And in order to make gross sound, a number of things needs to take place within the body. The following are a synopsis of the five components mentioned above. Sound, sattva. The gross physical aspect of mantra practice. You have three major methods of reciting mantra. The spoken mantra, the whispered mantra, and reciting mantra with pure thought. The spoken mantra is the result of the pure soundless sound, sattva, power that rises up from the dormant state of Kundalini power and manifests itself through the solar plexus chakra, heart chakra, and finally through the throat chakra, giving mankind the ability to manifest mental thoughts into spoken words. Reciting the mantra aloud controls the cosmic energies that manifest themselves on the gross physical plane of existence and manifest physical results. When chanting the mantra aloud, the practitioner must make sure to pronounce the mantra correctly with the right pitch and tone. Another point is to chant or recite the mantra with great devotion and vigor. This is considered dynamic and soul mantra. One of the effects of this type of mantra when intoned properly is that it accelerates the movement of energy particles within the auric envelope. These energy particles are the spinning particles of the aura in one direction, creating a centrifuge effect on the positive and negative energy particles. The spinning aura begins to separate the substances of different subtle densities, removing some and stimulating all the energy particles from its gravitational effects brought about from the centrifuge effect. This clears the chakra pathway by opening up the valence layer of the human aura. One of the great fathers of yoga, Patanjali, stated that we must stop the mental modifications, fritis, in order to experience higher consciousness. In his doctrine, the Sutras of Patanjali, the modifications are the random thoughts that pollute the valence levels of the human aura and cause a great distortion that helps to seed negative thought patterns and deposit them as unstable, discolored energy particles into the auric bodies, only to be used as a raw energy source to express itself in some future circumstance as your energized thoughts or actions. The practice of dynamic and soul mantra stops this modification of random thoughts by the repetition of the mantra. And it deposits the sacred tones of the mantra as seeds into the auric envelope as megabytes of energy deposits that we can use as raw spiritual energy sources to express ourselves in our future thoughts and actions. When mantra is recited in a whispered form, it controls the subtle cosmic energies that manifest results on the mental planes of existence. The method of whispering a mantra is being able to whisper that mantra where no other people can hear that mantra but you. The power of the whispered mantra is not allowing someone to hear you voice the mantra even if they are standing next to you. One of the mystic secrets of this is that the power of the whispered mantra is deposited into the mental layers of the aura without being distorted by the thought impression of onlookers, which manifests itself as power into the mental bodies and brings about results on the mental planes of existence. The recitation of mantra through thinking the mantra with pure thought manifests control over the cycle spiritual plane of existence. This is done through an ancient method of holding the cosmic energies within the body and releasing it through one channel. And that channel of energy is the method of using pure thought. This is where the practitioner, with the mouth closed, rolls the tongue to the back of the mouth, pressing against the roof of the mouth with as much pressure as possible, sealing off all cosmic energies from being released from that point, the throat, thereby immobilizing the tongue where no sound can be made by the tongue. This shuts down the physical and mental channels of cosmic energies and opens up a greater channel on the cycle spiritual plane of existence, which is a higher etheric level of cosmic energies. This method of chanting mantra with pure thought elevates man's consciousness into a higher level of operation. Posture, mudra. It's a power of posture that is not truly realized among mankind. As stated earlier, all movement is the manifestation of cosmic energy. The proper posturing, mudra, of the body restricts the movement and creates a tremendous pressure on the natural flow of prana by sealing the flow of these cosmic energies, prana, to a particular direction, thereby creating a concentration of power. It is believed that the positioning of the head, spinal column, arms, hands, and legs activates the various levels of cosmic energies, prana, that redirects, that radiates from major chakras along the spine. Mudra yoga is a series of hand signs and body posturing that seals the flow of cosmic energies from either entering or exiting a particular minute, minor, or major chakra. The sealing of these cosmic energies redirects and increases the flow of cosmic energies in another direction, thereby increasing the flow of prana in one chakra and decreasing it in another chakra. Breathing, pranayama, the control of prana. The breath of man is the sustaining power of man's physical existence. In fact, it is the largest source of gross prana that mankind takes in on a frequent basis, other than food and water. The recitation of mantra through thinking the mantra with pure thought manifests control over the cycle spiritual plane of existence. This is done through an ancient method of holding the cosmic energies within the body and releasing it through one channel. And that channel of energy is the method of using pure thought. This is where the practitioner, with the mouth closed, rolls the tongue to the back of the mouth, pressing against the roof of the mouth with as much pressure as possible, sealing off all cosmic energies from being released from that point, the throat, thereby immobilizing the tongue where no sound can be made by the tongue. This shuts down the physical and mental channels of cosmic energies and opens up a greater channel on the cycle spiritual plane of existence, which is a higher etheric level of cosmic energies. This method of chanting mantra with pure thought elevates man's consciousness into a higher level of operation. Posture, mudra. It's a power of posture that is not truly realized among mankind. As stated earlier, all movement is the manifestation of cosmic energy. The proper posturing, mudra, of the body restricts the movement and creates a tremendous pressure on the natural flow of prana by sealing the flow of these cosmic energies, prana, to a particular direction, thereby creating a concentration of power. It is believed that the positioning of the head, spinal column, arms, hands, and legs activates the various levels of cosmic energies, prana, that redirects, that radiates from major shakras along the spine. Mudra yoga is a series of hand signs and body posturing that seals the flow of cosmic energies from either entering or exiting a particular minute, minor, or major chakra. The sealing of these cosmic energies redirects and increases the flow of cosmic energies in another direction, thereby increasing the flow of prana in one chakra and decreasing it in another chakra. Breathing, pranayama, the control of prana. The breath of man is the sustaining power of man's physical existence. In fact, it is the largest source of gross prana that mankind takes in on a frequent basis other than food and water. Just as the physical science has found or discovered various laws and principles that govern certain functions of man's existence, the metaphysicians for thousands of years also discovered the metaphysical laws and principles as well. The physical science discovered that the earth's gravitation meets or equals the weight of most physical objects with a considerable density and weight that sits on the earth's surface. This means that the object that weighs 200 illes or pounds is met by another 200 pounds, being exerted upward as the weight of the object is being brought down on earth. This action of equally distributed weight being exerted against each other keeps the object from floating away into space. A similar metaphysical law was discovered by the mystics where the soul locks a part of its consciousness in the physical body. The sun issues a subtle sound that modifies mind substance and cosmic energies to allow the soul of man to express itself through. The earth and moon issues a sound in order to further modify the mind substance and cosmic energies that the soul operates through. Then the soul issues a sound that also modifies the mind and cosmic energies even further into a vehicle that the soul can operate through on several levels of existence. The soul whispers a mantra to sustain life, and the physical body echoes this sound through its inhale and exhale of breath. Movement, the activation of prana. As we stated earlier, movement represents subtle and gross cosmic energies at play in a positive, negative, or neutral form of actions. A restriction of movement is a method of creating karmic pressure on all movement to intensify the inner levels of chronic flow. All right actions create positive karmic pressures. All wrong actions create negative karmic pressures. A combination of both right and wrong actions creates a positive and negative force of karmic pressures that stagnates its forces. Sorry. This is why I don't highlight what I'm reading. Sorry about that. Mantra creates movement of chronic forces. The correct recitation of a mantra creates a definite movement of subtle energies that can be seen in the rotation of the aura. The physical gross sound of the mantra produces movement that rises from a form of subtle thought forces built up from the desire to speak. It is said that when we voice a mantra, all movement takes on a specific action of power. In reciting the mantra, the top lip represents Shiva, a pure static aspect of prana. The bottom lip represents Shakti, an active aspect of prana. And the tongue represents the nada force, an inner subtle force of sound vibrations produced from the will of Shiva, the absolute. The correct posture while chanting mantra helps to reserve the cosmic energies and create a channel in which the prana can flow. The regulation of the breath while chanting the mantra helps to purify the physical and subtle nodic pathways of the cosmic energies being set into motion to create positive samskara's upon the etheric and auric bodies. The concentrated movement of all these actions while chanting mantra tends to sensitize the man's physical body and subtle bodies to a level where it can take on higher levels of consciousness. Consciousness. The level of consciousness that we are addressing here is the consciousness that arrives from the concentrated efforts of chanting mantra. The point of subtle energies that's being transformed from the gross energies extends from the conscious will to chant the sacred mantra. The chanting of the mantra creates a mental wave of concentrated mantra power that works to transform gross mental cosmic energies into subtle mental cosmic energies. The sound vibrations emitted or produced from the recitation of the mantra creates this mental wave that seems to polarize the auric structure to the point where the human aura spins. The spinning of the aura has a sensitization effect on the brain, spinal column, nervous system, the subtle nervous system, and chakras. This sensitizing effect will, over time, give man the ability to receive higher frequency of consciousness that is not normally open to him. As stated in the last chapter, it is said that mantra is the language used by the soul to bring the chakra components into manifestation. Mantra is embodied sound vibrations that falls or sinks deep into the vortex centers of power that brought forward subtle and gross manifestations of Shakti. In short, mantra is the mental impressions, samskara's, of the soul. When men intone these mantras or sound vibrations properly, it has a natural magnetic pull on these embedded Shakti power signatures within the chakra system. Chapter six. The subtle powers of nada. Tracing the first spoken mantra through manifested Shakti. In this chapter, we will explore the subtle power of nada. As stated in the earlier chapters, this nada power was the initial sound vibration from the absolute. The nada power is that power released from the absolute that places the Shakti power into motion. In this chapter, we will look at four different levels of the nada power that manifest from the absolute or Shiva power or the supreme static endless potential of God. The nada power expresses itself as the initial force of creation, which is the birth of the Shakti power or the manifestation of it. The nada power is only an aspect of the Shakti power that first manifested itself as pure sound vibrations or pure universal consciousness. In discussing this subject, I must clarify the concept of Shiva and Shakti, which are the two main powers operating in creation that we know of. Shiva is the giver of all life and Shakti is the power of all life. Yet Shiva and Shakti are but one power source, and there is only supreme life, and that is Shiva or God. Shiva is absolute pure consciousness. It's absolute pure wisdom and it's absolute pure power in a state of endless potential. Now from this endless state of complete potential came the Shakti power in the form of nada to produce the first movement, which is sound. The first movement of this Shakti power has a particular arrangement of power that expresses itself on several levels of existence. In order to express this power, the tantric teachings used the symbol of the triangle to pinpoint the great concentrated points of power in its patterns of perpetuated motions throughout the universe. Each point of the triangle in the Western metaphysical philosophy is considered to be part of the many aspects of the Holy Trinity. With any power that manifested itself in a superior unified fashion on the casual level of creation, it naturally modifies itself on several lower levels of creation as well. This supreme all pervasive sound vibration that permeates from God, the absolute, gives consciousness to the Shakti power. In fact, it is called in some circles a manifestation of the Shakti power. Each level of the power has a particular signature that releases an overall power that aligns and unifies these manifested power points on each level that can be seen as a trinity force of the nada and Shakti powers. Nada powers radiating through the sun. This nada power that we are speaking of is the same nada power that lies behind the holy soundless sound vibrations that permeate from the sun. This gives Shakti power that is conditioned by the mighty sun and radiated from the sun, its superior movement and directions towards subtle and gross manifestation within the solar system. The nada power is the spoken word of the mighty sun, which is essentially the conscious will of the sun, which for all we know is to manifest a portion of its life on several planes of existence, promoting the will of God or the absolute. This nada power of the solar system that's at full use is radiated from the sun every thirty-two minutes by way of the sun issuing the holy and creative word mantra, the A U M. This mantra or sound vibration represents all mantras within realms of our existence. This is illustrated through the pronunciation of this great and holy word. In order to correctly pronounce this holy word, it takes the full use of the tongue. In the ancient Upanishad, it is said that in the beginning of the pronunciation of this holy word, the tip of the tongue should be curled to the back roof of the mouth on pronouncing, the A portion of this mantra. The tip of the tongue should move forward along the roof of the mouth in an upright position in the middle of the mouth while pronouncing the U portion of the mantra. The pronunciation of M portion of the holy word is correctly done when the tongue terminates its movement at the front portion of the mouth while the mouth is partially open. This is why it is said that you pronounce the A U M correctly, that if you pronounce the A U M correctly, you speak all words because in the pronunciation is the potential of all words. This great holy word is the first real trinity power demonstrated throughout nature. The following table gives a brief outline of the A U M power as it moves forward from the issuing point of God, the absolute. Here is that table. Table one, A U M power throughout nature. Number one, the initial power from spoken word. A, the Shiva nada. U, nada bindu, M, nada Shakti. Number two, absolute conscious will, will, knowledge, action. Number three, the Maha Bindus of our existence, sun, moon, earth, fire. Four, the devata presence, Brahma, Vishnu, Ruta. Number five, the embodied consciousness of man, bindu, nada, bija. The initial power from the spoken word of the A U M from the absolute God is the manifestation of the nada power from the Shiva power. This nada power is a sound vibration that permeates the universe and gives the creative signatures of life to the Shakti power of creation. This holy sound vibration of the absolute holds the initial will of the Supreme Creator. This origination point of nada not only delivers the conscious will of the absolute, but also forms a nada bindu, which is a massive point of conscious sound vibration that brings forward the nada Shakti power. The Shakti power moves forward in an all pervasive manner with the character signatures of the following. Table two, nada Shakti power. Number one, English will. Sanskrit ichya. The first character signature of the Shakti power is the conscious will of the absolute. Number two, knowledge, nana. This part of the character signature represents the omniscient force of this Shakti power. Number three, action, kriya. Third character signature within the Shakti power is the power to move in all directions on all planes of existence. The Shakti power armed with these signature characters expands outward, further pervading the whole universe, creating massive compacted points of concentrated nada and Shakti power, which is the Maha Bindu or the celestial beings of our solar system and many other systems. The sun, moon, and earth are the Maha Bindu or the great creative points of consciousness for mankind's realms of existence. This Shakti power takes on three distinct energy formations that help to bring about the right karmic conditions for the nada power and the Shakti power to express itself on several levels of existence. These distinct energy formations are described as three devatas, rudra, Vishnu, and brahma, in Sanskrit terminology. The first set of devatas called rudra draws their power from the earth and the fire that extends from the earth. These nada sound vibrations arrange themselves according to energy signatures of the mother earth. The second devata is Vishnu, energy formation, and it draws its power from the sun. The formation of nada sound vibrations arrange themselves according to energy signatures of the mighty sun to produce the power or qualities akin to the sun. The third set of devatas is called brahma. Its energy formation is developed from the power that radiates from the moon. The following table outlines the nada sound vibration, power. power, and Shakti power cosmic energies as it moves towards embodied consciousness. Table three, the inner nada and Shakti within the chakra system. First column, devatas and configuration points. As rudra, Vishnu, Brahma, and the Mahabindu celestial being, vajradja is earth, Vishnu, the sun, Brahma, moon. That nada force expresses through the bindu. Rudra is lam, ram, Vishnu, ram, yam, Brahma, ham, om. The psychic centers, six major chakras, the bindu points of energy conversions. Vajradja is the base of the spine, mudahara, and the sex center, svadhisthana. Vishnu is the solar plexus chakra, the manipura, and the heart chakra, anahata. And then brahma is the throat chakra, bishuta, and the cry chakra, ashna. The nada force expressed from the bindu, the chakra bijas, and the devatas conversion point. Rudra, va, sa, sa, and sa. And at the sex center, bach, bach, ma, ya, ra, la. Vishnu at the solar plexus, dha, dha, ta, ta, da, da, dha, na, pa, and pa. The heart center, ka, ka, ga, ga, na, ka, sha, ja, ja, na, ta, and ta. For Brahma at the throat center, the vows. And the ha and sa at the cry center. As stated earlier in the book, the soul configures the Shakti power into the Kundalini consciousness that blocks the doorway to shumna, which manifests the basic flow of Shakti power that's separated into two parts called pingala and ida. Kundalini then becomes the instrument that the soul works through. In its Kundalini dormant state of consciousness, it sings a song that manifests basic consciousness to all levels of existence. This is done by Kundalini sending a sound vibration up through the chakra system that creates the right Shakti configuration that manifests the vehicles of expression that the soul can work through in order to experience basic mental subtle and astral consciousness and eventually gross physical consciousness. These sound vibrations leave the dormant state of Kundalini and modify itself at the solar plexus chakra, the heart chakra, and finally at the throat chakra, where the total power to manifest basic consciousness is brought about by the fourth aspect of sound. The ida nadis, mental powers, and pingala nadis, vital powers, intersects at and through each chakra in this action that turns on the switch which allows consciousness to manifest on any level of existence. Each energy formation of these three energy conversion points that is called rudra, Vishnu, and Brahma formed two distinct sound vibrations that set into motion vortex centers of cosmic energies that act as instruments of consciousness that form a point of expression for the soul bindu of mankind to operate through. These nada sound vibrations that are issued from the bindus are called one syllable seed mantras, bijas of the chakras. Each chakra seed mantra being issued from the bindu is used to express a stigma of the soul's manifested consciousness on subtle and gross realms of existence. The major chakras along the spine express this one syllable seed mantra. These one syllable seed mantras uses the sound vibrations to cause a reformation of the nada and Shakti forces that further converge and reformat themselves, creating what is called chakra petals, which is bits of sound vibrations that make up what is called the letters of the Sanskrit language. These letters emit sound vibration that create tube-like sonic vibrations that become the carrying agents for mental and vital forms of cosmic energies, which are called the nadis. These nadis split the cosmic energies into three major types of energy flow. These sonic vibrations emitted from the letters create the pathways of movement for the positive, negative, and neutral flow of energies. These points conversion of these three types of energy flows create points and levels of consciousness that mankind work from on the subtle and gross realms of existence. Sound bodies of consciousness. The previous paragraphs briefly describe the cosmic sonic flow, solar sonic flow, terrestrial sonic flow, and the human sonic flow and formation of the nada forces, which are the sound bodies that give the power of movement to the Shakti power. As seen in the above paragraphs, the sound bodies represent the conscious will and manifested consciousness of man's soul. The following section will examine the subtle power of the nada forces that display themselves in sound bodies that make up the conscious will of mankind. The following table will outline the paragraphs that explain this flow of nada and Shakti power that's expressed through the perpetuate motion of this nada power. Table four, the trinity phases of nada and Shakti powers. First trinity, casual. Shiva, nada, Shiva and Shakti. Second trinity, casual etherek, bindu, nada, bijas. Third trinity, subtle physical, will, knowledge, action. Fourth trinity, subtle physical, sadhik, rajas, tamas. Shiva is the absolute source, the all and all, the superior consciousness of all things, God. Shiva is also the creator of all things and the destroyer of all things as well, for it gives voice as limited consciousness to all things through its Shakti power of evolution, that is a matrix of maya Shakti, which is the illusion of consciousness through various forms and a power. This power of Shiva is also the destroyer of all things in creation when the Shakti power elevates consciousness to a liberated state, back to an endless state of potential, back to the Shiva state of pure consciousness. This elevated state of Shakti consciousness dissolves make into Shiva, dissolved into Shiva, making Shiva destroying power of Maya. In the metaphysical circles, the triangle symbol is used to express the will of God. Each point of the triangle represents the bindu, point of consciousness. The first two points are the Shiva and the Shakti. The third point is the relationship between the Shiva and Shakti. This trinity of power brought about by Shiva and Shakti repeats itself over and over again throughout the process of evolution and evolution in creation. It masks itself in many forms of cosmic energy and mind substance under a framework of various aspects of the divine law in order to bring about multi-levels of limited consciousness in a framework of time units. Now we must understand that this sound vibration, the first word, the great mantra released from Shiva at the beginning of creation was an expression of pure consciousness. Mantra therefore is the power of consciousness. The absolute, the Lord Shiva, used the first word mantra to release this aspect of the Shiva power called Shakti to bring a portion of the endless potential of Shiva into active manifestation as Shakti power. In the ancient science of mantra sastra, it is said that sound mantra produces shape. The production of shapes indicates that there is some degree of intelligence at play to hold and govern that shape together. They understood that a specific note and pitch in a body of mind substance and cosmic energy will produce particular shapes or forms. On a cosmic level, these shapes and forms are the macrocosmic creation such as the ever-expanding body of the universe, the countless galaxies and solar systems. On a solar level, these shapes and forms can be seen as the mighty suns within solar systems, its orbiting planets, and the orbiting moons of each planet. On the microcosmic levels of forms and shapes, we have the human expression of life on the most subtle manifested level to the grossest level of manifestation. We also have the animal kingdom, the plant kingdom, and mineral kingdom. All parts of these microcosmic levels of forms and shapes that exist on the etheric, astral, and physical planes of existence as well. Behind the forms and shapes is the sound vibrations that gave the command for action. All motion is the result of the initial sound vibration, and this sound vibration is the conscious will projected upon the motionless endless potential of mind substance and the cosmic energies within the pure cosmic state, I'm sorry, within the pure conscious state of Shiva or God. In some of the ancient doctrines, this endless potential of Shiva is projected as akasa, which is recognized as one of the five mahabuddhas in creation. Akasa is recognized as the etheric sound vibration that is the producer of all manifested space, forms, and shapes. In the illustrations of the chakra system, the power of the chakras are described by symbols of animals, Sanskrit letters, varnas, bits of modes of motion, Sanskrit syllables, which are bijas or seed mantras that govern the realm of consciousness of its specific chakra. And behind it all is a symbol of the bindu, a spiritual germ of the chakra, or the point of pure consciousness from the all-knowledge space within the chakra. The bindu is pure consciousness that's expressing itself as nada, a universal sound vibration that extends itself through the manifested creation. When the Shakti power is projected from Shiva with the first spoken word, vak, the initial universal sound vibration, it is said that it expresses three aspects of itself, which are the universal willpower, ichya, the universal power of knowledge, nana, and the universal power of action, kriya. These initial aspects of the Shakti power tend to set the nature, pakriti, of this thing we call creation. The willpower is the expression of the initial sound of the word from Shiva or God. It shows the superior consciousness of the will to release the Shakti power. The universal power of knowledge conforms or sets limitations for this initial power that was set in perpetuated motion by the first word or sound vibration from Shiva or God. This power of knowledge is the divine law of God or karma. It configures the power by setting the rules and regulation that move in parts and segments of time, kala, that allow the Shakti power to involve itself and evolve itself back to its original source. The universal power of action is the power that is used by everything that moves or seeks to move. It is the power of all things and is used by the power of all things. In all bodies of matter, there are the three gunas qualities of manifested matter, sadhik gunas, rajas gunas, and tamas gunas. These gunas can be described as follows. The sadhik qualities or gunas are the pure wave of consciousness that molds manifested matter with positive imprints of all right thoughts and actions that arrived from true awareness. It is the inner knowledge of the higher self that inspires mankind at the proper karmic times of his life. The sadhik state elevates consciousness and transcends the Shakti power to pure consciousness. The not just qualities, is mental wave of consciousness that permeates through all matter, giving rise to mental passions of all kinds, lust, greed, violence, false vision, jealousy, desires, etc. Rajas is also described as being the nature of attraction springing from thirst of things and needed attachment that produces bondage through clinging to the action of things. The tamas qualities is the inert energy void of any light. It's a dark wave of consciousness that permeates all through matter. This darkness brings about fear, confusion, hopelessness, grief, as well as hunger and thirst. The tamas is a state of being that most animals and primitive man work from. These three gunas cannot be separated in any embodied consciousness, organic or inorganic. Though in every case, one of the gunas may appear to predominate throughout the existence of its manifestation. It is because of this, in organic or inorganic matter, we can find some point of rudimental sentient life. This is the sadhik guna forces expressing its Shakti qualities. Alright. That completes chapters five and six for today's study session. Next time, we will pick up chapter seven. chapter seven, Mystic Knowledge of Mantra. And we will look at chapter eight. What is cosmic energy or prana? Thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance and for your attention. I welcome you to join us on Sunday for our open discussion. Feel free to ask any questions you may have, either from this reading or any questions we have at all. And we'll gladly answer those for you. So then, take care and have a wonderful weekend. Thank you very much.